Coronavirus epidemiology and then tell you a little bit at the end about the number of projects that we're doing in my lab. We're doing quite a few things, including we just released an app this week that I'm hoping you guys will find interesting and use. And I can share with you what it does and how it works. But we've also published some papers using big data techniques, tracking the flow of the pathogen around the world. We are working probably in partnership with Harlan to do a New Haven area seroprevalence cohort study. We have an initiative to look at how the coronavirus might be affected by gathering for elections. So we have quite a few things going on at the moment in this area. So, and I'm not going to talk about the clinical aspects of the disease, which I'm sure all of you know much better than I do. But I think the way I'd like to start is by saying that we are experiencing something very unusual in the life of our species, and that's the introduction of a new pathogen. So we happen to be alive at a moment when a new and serious pathogen is taking root in our species, is spreading around the world with the ultimate outcome that the pathogen will become endemic. This pathogen is likely to become like other influenza A viruses that afflict us, and probably even like other coronaviruses that just give us the common cold. Now, in fact, this pathogen, as you probably all know, bears a very strong resemblance to a pathogen that has been circulating in bats for quite a while. It's the seventh coronavirus species to afflict us. There are four that cause the common cold. There's the SARS-1 pandemic from 2003, and there's MERS, the Middle Eastern Respiratory Syndrome virus. And this pathogen left to humans sometime in November in Wuhan in China, started causing diseases which were detected in December. And by the middle of January, the Chinese knew it was very serious. A very important epidemiologist and respiratory physician in China, who had been responsible for coping with the 2003 pandemic, along with five other leaders, went to Wuhan in the middle of January and did a field survey there and said, "Oh, my God, this is awful." And within days after they returned to Beijing, China decided to quarantine Wuhan. Now, I had been working for a number of years with some colleagues in Hong Kong and in China to use phone data in that country to look at how different sorts of factors might affect social structure. For example, if you, if there's an earthquake, who do people call? You know, how does the shock of an earthquake change intimacy, social intimacy, for example? And they contacted me on January the 24th. I was sort of dimly aware of what was happening in China before then. And they said, "Let's use these phone data to do something with the virus." And so I began paying serious attention to what was happening in China at that time. And I also have some Chinese graduate students who are sort of letting me know about what was going on back home with their families. And we worked nonstop on that paper, and I'll talk a little bit about it later on, until February the 18th for three weeks and submitted it, and that paper was just published in late April. And in that paper, what we did is we had information on 11.5 million people, I'm sorry, transits of people through Wuhan between January 1st and January 24th. So this period of time, we had the misfortune as a species that the virus left to our species at the time of the biggest mass migration of humans that takes place every year. Three billion movements take place in China in the run-up to the Lunar New Year. This year, it was on the 25th, I think, of January. So millions of people were flowing throughout the nation of China, just as this virus jumped to our species. We had data on 11.5 million transits through Wuhan, which is a transit. And many of them, most of them, or some of them, were, a low fraction of them, were infected unbeknownst to them with a virus. They didn't know it. And they fanned out across the country. And what we were able to show in this model that we proposed is that we could predict the timing, location, and intensity of the epidemic simply by knowing the flow of people through Wuhan. Wuhan was a risk source that seeded the epidemic throughout China and ultimately actually throughout the world. Now, China quarantined Wuhan on January the 24th and soon thereafter the whole nation. I think by the 25th of January, or certainly within a couple of days of that, 930 million people were put in lockdown, like what we've experienced the last month or so, or two. In other words, they were allowed to leave their house about once a week to get essentials. China organized a delivery of all essentials to these people. You know, it's an authoritarian country with a collectivist culture. They were able to do this. And as I was watching this happen, I really got scared. Because to me, it seemed like the Chinese had basically detonated a social nuclear weapon. That is to say, they thought this virus was so dangerous and so difficult to control that they saw fit to put 1 billion people in their homes for months, which is what they did. And so I was getting very alarmed by early February by what I was seeing in China. And then very distressed by what I was seeing as the inaction, if not outright lies, coming out of the White House, for example. I think there was a lot, a lot to explain about how we as a nation failed to respond to this pandemic. Now, the Chinese did not shut down international travel as fast as they should have. I don't think it was deliberate. I think they were just focused on protecting their own nation and not really so worried about people leaving Wuhan. And unsurprisingly, some, given the connections between the West Coast and China, we believe using genetic studies, that the first cases from China arrived on the West Coast, and certainly in Seattle, by the middle of January. It would be approximately a month later before the first case arrived, we think, in New York via Italy. So of course, by then, Italy had collapsed in northern Lombardy. And then the East Coast epidemic in our country was seeded by the European variants or strains of the pathogen that had initially spread from China in the other direction. The first paper, as you probably all know about this condition, on the first 41 cases, was published in The Lancet on January the 24th. It was released online. And even in that paper, it reported that there was so worrisome evidence of human-to-human spread. Why anyone would read that paper and not, you know, and also knowing the pathophysiology of the previous coronaviruses which had afflicted our species, not immediately conclude that there was human-to-human spread? Why this was even debated thereafter is completely unclear to me, let alone, for example, the governor of Georgia, like, two weeks ago saying he had just learned that there is human-to-human spread of this, of this condition, you know, where the CDC is in Atlanta. And in that paper, they discussed also the severity of the condition. Of course, it was just a case series of the first cases. Usually, the initial cases are typically more severely ill, but people died from this condition. And so, and as time went on, in our country, after the importations from abroad, community transmission swamps importation. So, once the, you know, the cat is out of the bag and the epidemic is everywhere, it's too late, basically, to do contact tracing, nor is it make any sense to try to close your borders. So the idea that Rhode Island or Florida would close their borders to people from New York, you know, based on their license plates, as was attempted, you know, a month ago, is ridiculous. There's just really no way to stop the pathogen at that point through border closure. Actually, border closure more generally for pandemic disease like this, particularly with a pandemic disease that has some of the epidemiological properties we'll discuss in a moment, basically serves no purpose. I am unfamiliar with any situation in the last century in which border closure stopped an epidemic from reaching. The best case we have is in 1918, some islands in the South Pacific were able to delay the arrival of the flu pandemic in that epoch by about 30 months. But even they eventually, you know, were hit by Spanish influenza. So, right from the outset, epidemiologists were trying to estimate some key epidemiological parameters of this pathogen. I'm sure most of you or all of you will know these things, but let me review them briefly and then add some wrinkles that you may not have been paying attention to. As you all know, the R0 is the number of new cases that will be infected by an index case in a fully susceptible population. That is to say, it's trying to capture some intrinsic property of the germ, some infectiousness of the germ in a typically interacting human population, this is also important, where no one is immune. Now, of course, that's not the real world. When the epidemic starts taking root, several things happen. First of all, some people survive and become immune, and that changes the transmissibility. And second, people's behavior changes. People stop interacting with each other. So the more pertinent parameter is something called the RE, the effective reproductive rate, which is in a kind of a steady-state situation when we're estimating it right now. How many new cases do we get for every existing case? And what we're trying to do is drive that below 1, such that each new case doesn't replace itself. When that happens, that's when the epidemic begins to extinguish. As near as we can estimate, the R0 for this condition is about 2.4, maybe as high as 3. A meta-analysis just published in The Lancet, like, a week or two ago, looking at a dozen or more studies, comes to the conclusion that it's probably around 3, but for various reasons, I think it's probably somewhat smaller. Now, this is high. This R0 is high. Seasonal flu has an R0 of about 1.3, chickenpox about 3.5 to 6, Ebola about 1.5 to 1.9, and of course measles, which is, I think, the most contagious disease we know, has an R0 of 18. No, one person infected with measles infects 18 others. This is why, incidentally, you need 96% vaccination rates in the human population before you can have herd immunity to the measles. There is an inverse relationship defined by a simple mathematical formula between the R0 and the fraction that need to be vaccinated or immune. So the higher the R0, the higher the fraction that need to be vaccinated or immune to stop an epidemic. And that's why, for example, because measles is so contagious, you don't reach herd immunity till 96% of the people have been vaccinated. So RE is the effective reproductive number, and it has the property that it can be changed or manipulated by the actions that we take. But there's another very subtle parameter that people don't really talk about that's extremely important. And that's something like a measure of the variance in the RE, or like the second moment of the distribution. So imagine one case in which we have a population of 50 people or 100 people, and the RE for every one of them is 2, so each of them can infect 2 people. And imagine another case in which we have a population of 100 people in which most of them, the RE is 0. That is to say, they're infected, but they don't infect anyone else. And one or two of those people can infect 100 or 200 other people. So the average RE in the 2, in this hypothetical example I'm giving you, is the same. But the variance in the RE across people is different in these two populations. I think some people call this the kappa parameter. It's a measure of the spread of the RE in a population. The reason it's important is that when the kappa is low, when the variance is low, the ability of the pathogen to establish itself due to importation is higher. So in other words, if everyone in China has an RE of 2, then some random Chinese coming to the United States will see the United States. If the variance is high in China, then we have to rely on the dumb luck that one of these super-spreaders arrives. Otherwise, people come from China, there is no importation, it doesn't affect us. So the ability of a pathogen, of an epidemic, to spread also depends on the variance in the RE, not just the absolute value of the RE. Now, one of the reasons this is important is that it seems to be the case that SARS-2, our current pathogen, I'm just going to call it SARS-2 instead of SARS-CoV-2, SARS-2 seems to have a higher kappa than SARS-1. You may all remember, in 2003, we had the first SARS-1 epidemic, which had coronavirus pandemic, which, which sort of petered out after about 10,000 cases worldwide. Hong Kong was badly hit, Canada was badly hit, but it petered out. It petered out for a number of reasons, some we'll come back to in a moment. But one of the ways it was different, even though it had a very similar R0 compared to SARS-2, SARS-1 did, the kappa, we think, for SARS-2 is more consistent. There was more variance in the kappa for SARS, the kappa was higher. The variance in the RE for SARS-1 was higher, we think. Another parameter people tried to get a handle on very quickly was the case fatality rate or the infection fatality rate. And there's still a lot of debate about this parameter. So as you probably all know, the case fatality rate is the fraction of people who die conditional on their coming to medical attention, which is a bit arbitrary. Or, a little bit better, conditional on developing symptoms, which is sometimes called the SCFR, the symptomatic case fatality rate. And we think this number is, we still think, lots of, lots of papers still think that this number is between 0.5 and 1% of people on average who die, who get, who come to medical attention or get symptoms from SARS-2 will die. Now, that is actually quite a high number. I doubt very much if it'll be less than 0.3%. It's possible, but I doubt it. I think it's going to, in the end, I think it's going to be between 0.5 and 1%. And just to remind you, the CFR for seasonal flu is 0.1%, or 1 out of 1,000 people who get the seasonal flu of all ages on average will die. And SARS-2, the current SARS, is about 1/10 as deadly as the one from 2003. So the case fatality rate for SARS-1 was about 10%. And ironically, this is worse for us. Because when the disease is more deadly, it kills its victims before it can spread. This is one of the reasons Ebola epidemics tend to extinguish themselves, is they're just so damn deadly, which is awful, that the victim doesn't spread as much. So one of the ironies is that this epidemic, the SARS-2, is less deadly, which actually means more people get infected. It's one of the reasons more people get infected. Now, this deadliness of the SARS, of the CFR of SARS-2 being about, about 1% can be compared to other pathogens. So the CFR for a 1918 pandemic was about 4% to 5% of people who got the Spanish flu died. And so this makes the disease, it's less deadly than both 1918 and even 2003, but maybe more spreadable. And in general, pathogens don't want to kill us. From the point of view of the pathogen, it's better that we not die, right? What the pathogen wants is to make us infectious and move out and about. If we crawl into our beds and die, then that strain of the pathogen is extinguished. So the strains that just make us sick but don't kill us tend to predominate. And this is one of the reasons that I believe, and others' experts believe, that the cold virus, cold virus strains of coronavirus we have now are probably echoes of distant introductions of equally lethal coronaviruses in the past. So sometime in the past, other similar coronaviruses left from bats to humans and then eventually mutated and got more benign. So now they just give us the common cold and have some other clinical features. Now, the infection fatality rate is different than the CFR. The IFR is the fraction of people who become infected with a pathogen who die, regardless of whether they come to medical attention. And our best estimates still are that only about 50% of the people get symptoms from this condition, which means that the IFR is about half the CFR. So you can kind of convert them very, very easily. Now, we can use these two parameters, the case fatality rate and the RE, or the R0, and plot all the respiratory pandemics that have occurred in the last 100 years. So you put a little dot for every pandemic. And I did this, and others did this too, but anyway, I did it as an exercise for myself in early March. And to me, it looked like this pandemic would be about as bad as the 1957 pandemic. It would have middling infectiousness, RE, and middling fatality. The 1957 pandemic was the second most lethal pandemic in the last 100 years compared to the 1918 pandemic, which was the worst we've had in the last 100 years. So it was clear to me in March and other experts that we were facing something which was a very, you know, apocal, like, very rare event. It was serious. But since then, I've gotten more concerned, because these parameters, as we've learned more about them, honestly seem to be closer to 1918, okay? Both the case fatality rate and the, certainly the RE of this condition is higher than the 1957 condition. And I think the case fatality rate in the end will also be, will be higher. So I'm very worried, very, very worried. I think this is bad. And, and as you all know, 100,000 people have already died, even despite all the extraordinary efforts that we have made. And I truly believe that many more hundreds of thousands would have died already had we not done what we have done. And unfortunately, I believe that many more hundred thousand Americans will still die. And certainly, people around the world will die. I think Brazil is going to be a disaster, for example. And I need to emphasize that what we have achieved, and I'll talk more about this in a moment, by kind of the lockdowns, is just the, you know, we've not eradicated the germ. We've just stopped its transmission. The pathogen is still there. It's going to come back, and it's going to come back to China, and it's going to come back to us, and it's going to come back to Italy and everywhere else in the world. It's going to come back. And the properties of the pathogen are going to be the same. Maybe it'll be a little less deadly for the reasons of mutation I mentioned. Maybe it will mutate to be less infectious, but I doubt it. It could also be worse. But anyway, it's going to come back. Now, as you all know, the disease has a very wide range of presentations, from asymptomatic to mild condition to critical illness. And increasingly, we're learning that it can affect many organ systems. And I was talking to Patrick last week about the fact that GIM is setting up a post-COVID clinic. And it was really interesting to listen to him and what he'd been observing, and what you, you know, what GIM is planning. Because I think we are going to see long-term sequelae, not only pulmonary, but cardiac and renal and other organ systems will be affected. And the symptomatology is also protean, as you all know. People have different kinds of symptoms, everything from COVID toes to diarrhea to anosmia, to, you know, stuffy nose, to pneumonia, and so forth. Now, the case fatality rate, of course, depends, with all respiratory conditions, depends with age. Usually, usually the epidemic has a U-shaped function. That is to say, it kills the very young and the very old. And so, working-age people go out and about into the community, and then they bring the virus home, where it kills the extremes, the very vulnerable infants and the very vulnerable elderly. In 1918, the 1918 pandemic famously had a W-shaped mortality curve for reasons that are still poorly understood, but there's a really clever explanation. And in the Q&amp;A, if you want, I can tell you this explanation that someone offered, which may be true. And finally, there is the backward and forward-shaped L distribution. It kills the young and spares the old, or kills the old and spares the young, which is what we have with SARS-2. It's almost a biblical feature of this plague that it spares the young. And I found it kind of moving, honestly, that children who are, you know, so prone to the predations of infectious disease the world over, as you all know, infectious disease is the leading killer of children around the world, that they are actually spared this one. And certainly, as a parent, it's made it more tolerable for me not to worry about my, my wife and I have three grown kids in their twenties and also a 10-year-old. We're not worried about them, you know, dying from this condition. So it has a backward L shape, SARS-2 does. Let's talk for a moment about two other parameters. I'm sure you guys all know, the incubation period. But there's something interesting about SARS-2 that affects what we've seen around the world. The incubation period is the time period from infection to the onset of symptoms, and that's between 2 and 14 days. And the latency period, the latent period, is the time between infection and onset of infectiousness, the ability of a person to infect others. The difference between those two is called the mismatch period. Actually, in some veterinary studies, it's called the omega period, which I think is a better, a better term for it, because it causes a lot of mischief for us if the latent period is shorter than the, than the incubation period, as unfortunately is the case for SARS-2. So for example, something like HIV, you can have HIV for a very long time and never have any symptoms, but you're infectious. So the latency period for HIV is shorter than the incubation period. Conversely, something like smallpox, you can't be infectious unless you have symptoms. So the latency period is right equal to the incubation period, or maybe even a little longer. First, the pustules have to erupt on your body, and then later that day, you can start infecting others. In the case of SARS-1, the latency period and the incubation period were about the same. So people had to have symptoms and be seriously ill before they could infect others. And this is one of the reasons SARS-1 was easier to control. Because by the time the people got sick, we knew it. They were already in the hospital. Incidentally, this is one of the reasons a lot of the super-spreading events for SARS-1 were in hospitals. Because the people went to the hospital and then infected everybody, because nobody was expecting this. Unfortunately, for SARS-2, the latency period is shorter than the, than the incubation period. And many studies have now been done which show that probably at least half of the infections in epidemics outbreaks around the world are obtained from other people who are asymptomatic. This makes it extraordinarily difficult to control the epidemic. And it's one of the reasons that the collapse of this nation with testing and tracing was so appalling. Because we just were completely blind. There was no way to know where it was. We couldn't even rely on symptoms. Now, as you all know, the transmission modes certainly include respiratory droplets, almost surely include airborne transmission. And there's some debate about whether it includes fomites, or to what extent. The Chinese certainly feel that it does include fomites. There's probably some fecal transmission and maybe some other body fluids as well. I see people are sending some questions in the chat, but I can't track those and talk to you at the same time. So I'll be done speaking soon and we can have a conversation. Or if you raise your hands, I can call on you. I can track that list on the right here as I'm talking to you. How do we respond to this? Well, as you all know, there are two kinds of responses. Pharmaceutical interventions, drugs and vaccines, and non-pharmaceutical interventions. And unfortunately, we basically are stuck with using, we're like in the epidemiological Stone Age when it comes to responding to this. We only have the same tools that were available to people for the last few hundred years. Social, physical distancing, school closure, border closure, mask-wearing, you know, hygiene, wash your hands, I mean, real basic stuff. That's all we've got as a weapon to fight the germ at the moment. There are two kinds of NPI, non-pharmaceutical interventions. Individual things, things like handwashing, mask-wearing, and self-isolation that people can do on their own. And collective things, like border closures, collective hygiene, you know, cleaning the subway, testing and tracing, bans on gatherings, school closures, and stay-at-home orders, roughly in that sequence of inconvenience to the internal public, the populace. And you can also look at all the NPI in a different axis, which is interventions designed to stop transmission, like hygiene interventions and mask-wearing, and interventions designed to stop contacts. So you've got transmission reduction and contact reduction. So when we all stay at home, we are reducing interactions between people, or we can wear a mask, which doesn't reduce interactions, but reduces transmission. Now, the point of these, as you all know by now, was to flatten the curve. Why do we do that? It's not just to give our healthcare workers the break that they deserve. It's because if we do it, we can save lives. How do we save lives exactly? What is it about flattening the curve that saves lives? Well, first of all, I need to say, sometimes it might not save lives, all right? Sometimes all you've done, it's like you build breakers offshore, and it slows down a wave, but the same volume of water comes ashore. So instead of having a high amplitude, narrow wave, you have a low amplitude, flat wave. But in the end, all the same amount of water comes ashore. But we hope that less water comes ashore. Why? Well, first of all, by allowing our healthcare system to work in terms of personnel and materiel, we allow them to do a better job. When doctors and nurses are not frantic, exhausted, poorly equipped, they are able to perform better and maybe save more lives. We have lower density in the hospital. That's first thing. Another reason flattening the curve helps is because you can push some of the cases out into the future. And maybe by the time those cases occur, we'll have invented drugs or a vaccine, and we'll prevent those deaths, or we'll know better how to use our ventilators. So right now, initially, we're doing stupid things with ventilators. But after our ICU docs learn what they're doing, we'll lower the mortality rate. That's the second reason. And the third reason is that postponing the cases allows the virus time to mutate to get more benign, which is what usually happens. So some of the people will become infected in the future with a less deadly strain of the virus than the otherwise would have gotten infected with had they got infected today. And that's why we do it. Unfortunately, with this pathogen, as with all other pandemics, healthcare workers are at special risk. Thucydides writes about this in The Plague of Athens in 430 B.C., about how the doctors were dying. This has been something that has enraged me right from January, when I was observing the healthcare workers dying in China. The fact that we did not prepare, that the adequate equipment has just been so disgusting to me. I think medicine is a calling. I think we are rightly expected to take some risks in the care of patients. I remember when I was a house officer and we had HIV-positive patients, and it was always like, who's going to finger-stick them, and what do you do? And some of us would be exposed to blood on mucosal surfaces from splattering or vomit from HIV-positive patients or sputum, et cetera. But we had equipment, right? I mean, the idea that we would expect our healthcare workers to perform these tasks without proper protective equipment just has enraged me. There have been, as you know, many outbreaks in different occupational settings, not just hospitals and nursing homes, but also prisons and ships. And very interestingly, meatpacking plants, something like, I think, I think thirty percent of the top fifty outbreaks in the country have been in meatpacking plants. We can talk about that if you're interested. Fifty percent have been in prisons and the remainder in nursing homes and in ships. The burden of this disease falls harder on men. Men have a substantially higher likelihood of becoming infected and of dying conditional on, I'm sorry, not a substantially higher, approximately equal likely to becoming infected, but a substantially higher risk of dying if they become infected. And as is typical of infectious disease, this disease is very socially stratified. So the poor and the marginalized and the sick are much more prone to get it and to die from it. I have a couple of more points to make and then I'll stop. I can't tell if I'm interesting you or boring you because I'm not in the room, so I can't really see your faces and, you know, it's a very weird medium, this damn medium we're in. Which is this notion of waves of a pandemic. Every respiratory pandemic in the last century has had waves. This one will too. It will come back. It will come back in late October, early November in all likelihood. Probably the wave will be, there's a lot of debate right now. It's hard to predict, will it be less bad, which is typical, usually the second wave and third wave before the thing settles down and extinguishes are not as bad as the initial wave. Nineteen eighteen famously, the second wave was four times as deadly as the first wave. But this will come back and there are a number of reasons that this happens. One has to do with this notion of seasonal forcing, which has to do with the seasonality of these germs and, 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 and which in turn has to do with human behavior. Like for example, in September, people go back to work and back to school, we move indoors. Therefore, our behavior changes, which facilitates the spread of the pathogen. Possibly there are environmental factors related to the heat or the humidity which affected spread or modify the resistance of our body. But this is what typically happens. The germ moves to the southern hemisphere for their winter and then comes back north again and is almost certainly going to happen. Some people, myself included, suspect if I, if you force me to bet, I think the second wave will be worse than the first wave. If I had to pick, but I don't know. It's hard to be sure. Now, what's going to happen eventually is that this epidemic will become endemic among us. It'll become like the seasonal flu. And we will either develop herd immunity or we will get a vaccine. Now, I flip flopped between optimistic and pessimistic about a vaccine more times than I can possibly tell you. But now my new position is that even if we get a vaccine, by the time we get it and by the time we distribute it, it's going to be roughly at the time we're developing herd immunity anyway, plus or minus six months. So I don't think it's going to make much difference in the course of this, ultimate course of this pandemic. It will save some lives if we get one, but ultimately I don't think it's going to shorten what's going to happen to us in the next five years. I think we have two and a half years of pain ahead of us because of this. It's not anyone's fault. We're just living at a moment when a new deadly germ has entered our species. It's going to do its thing for about two and a half years. Then I think for two and a half years, people are going to be gun shy. They're not going to go to restaurants as much. They're not going to want to travel as much. And then I think in about five years, we'll return to normal. We'll have like a roaring twenties, you know, when there'll be a lot of licentiousness and, you know, return to secularism, you know. Right now, everyone is having a come to Jesus moment. Religiosity typically rises during times of plague. And that's happening right now in our country. And, but I think, you know, that's, that's my prediction about what's going to happen. Another important parameter in this regard is something known as the attack rate. And that's how many people ultimately are infected, believe it or not. Not everyone gets infected. In nineteen fifty seven, most jurisdictions had an attack rate of about twenty five percent. Some of the hardest hit part of our country only had an attack rate of about forty percent. So even in an uncontrolled situation, not everyone gets infected. And so this is itself a very interesting topic, which we can discuss. Why does that happen? And there's some interesting details about, about that, which, which we can discuss. Serial prevalence studies to date, Sweden just released its information two days ago. Sweden, as you know, has had a fairly relaxed approach to social, to physical distancing. Their nationwide prevalence is four percent. Which means they have a long way to go still. In New York City, as you know, we estimate it's about twenty percent. Other good serial prevalence studies done around the country, serial prevalence, for example, in healthcare workers. On the one hand, we're richer than the average American. On the other hand, we're more exposed to the average American. So if you kind of balance those out, using, using serial prevalence survey of employees, healthcare workers at New Haven, at Yale New Haven Hospital is a kind of a good proxy, roughly speaking, for what's happening in the community. And, and now those, I don't remember what the recent reports are. I haven't spoken to Al, maybe some of you know, but those are also low. So I think we have a way to go. The lack of testing, I've talked about, let me just say a couple of things about what we, some of the projects we're doing in the lab. We're doing quite a few different things. One of the things we're doing is, is we're using big data techniques to try to forecast the course of the epidemic. I mentioned our project using Chinese data at the beginning. That paper was just published in Nature like two weeks ago. You can read it if you want. We look at the flow of people throughout China and how that, the movement of people can be used to forecast the trajectory of the pathogen. More interestingly, in my view, or not more interestingly, perhaps more usefully, my lab just released an app this past Monday. We're doing a soft launch this week, so you're welcome. We would love it if you would use it and, and send us bug reports. But please don't advertise it broadly till next week because we're not yet ready for a whole, you know, we hope eventually millions of people will use it, but we're not quite ready for that. The app is called Hunala, H U N A L A. You can read about it at hunala, H U N A L A dot Yale dot E D U. And what the app is, it's like ways for coronavirus. You anonymously contribute information about your symptoms. The app aggregates this information and gives you feedback on your risk score. It provides two risk scores every day, your risk based on where you live and your risk based on where you are in the network. So as more and more people use it, it becomes more and more accurate and precise. So we can anonymously monitor your friends, friends, friends who told us they had a fever three weeks ago. This increases your risk of respiratory disease today. And your friends, friends are popular versus my friends, friends are not popular. That increases your risk, for example. So we use network science principles anonymized and with incredible respect for privacy to collect this information. And once you give us a little information about your symptoms, which takes less than five seconds. If nothing is happening, you say, no, no, and you're done. If something has happened, you have to answer like a minute worth of questions. Yes, I saw the doctor. Yes, I have COVID. No, I do not. Or whatever. Yes, I have symptoms. What are they? Fever, cough, et cetera. Very, we trying to make, give us feedback about the user interface and so on. And then we ping you once a day with a gentle reminder, if you wish to let us know what's happening. And that information is just like waves, like you're driving down the highway and you let the app know there's a traffic jam here. And then people behind you on the highway say, wait a minute, there's a traffic jam ahead and they can veer off and avoid the traffic jam, for example. I'm very proud of the work that the team has done. We also are working with Amin Karbasi's group to implement a fantastic machine learning algorithm, which develops the risk estimates, which are fed back to you based on the data that's collected using network science principles. So I'm going to say one more thing and then I'll shut up. And that is the question of when do epidemics end? And there are two ways that they end. They end epidemiologically. And as I told you, I don't think this one's going to end for another couple of years. And then eventually it'll peter out, like all epidemics do, including the Black Death ended. Now, that took a few centuries, but it didn't end. And, and socially, you know, when we get used to this. So this disease, there is no exit for our species, but that this disease becomes endemic among us. And here, finally, I would just invoke my training as a hospice physician by saying that alas, in the stages of coping with dying, Kubla Ross may be right that the final stage is acceptance. And I think we just have to accept that this bad thing has happened to our species at the moment we were alive on this planet. Thank you.
Okay, Nicholas, thank you very much. That was wonderful. Okay, so we have some questions in the chat box or people can raise their hands electronically or otherwise as well. Let's see here. I'll go to the chat box or we can go to the chat box together here. Rita Roy, I'm curious about your thoughts on the study that just came out of Columbia that implementing distancing in the U S one or two weeks earlier would have prevented a significant number of deaths.
Yes. Yes, I think that's exactly right. And it just has to do with the exponential growth of the curve. So yeah, it's a, you know, the doubling time of deaths and the doubling time of cases. So that's right. But, you know, keep in mind that even if we had done that, we wouldn't have permanently, we would still have to do something. Remember, flattening the curve just buys us time. The real question is, what do we do when the lockdowns stop? Can we get Americans to wear masks? Can we get Americans to distribute their food differently? You know, can we rejigger our economy? And I was also very distressed by the Congress's trillion dollar and soon to be multi trillion dollar relief package, because what they really did is they spent a lot of money on the symptoms. It's like a palliative medicine, you know, it's like a hospice doctor thing. They treated the economic consequences of the threat, but not the threat. Really, we should be spending hundreds of billions of dollars fighting the virus, which means we should invest heavily in drugs, in vaccine development. Why Bill Gates? Why this nation has to rely on Bill Gates to build seven factories instead of us building the seven factories? On P P E, on, on training more ICU nurses. All of these things are things that we need to do on public education campaigns and frankly, on honest communication from our leaders about the nature of the threat that we face. These are all things we need to be doing in my view.
David Rosenthal asks, if R naught is two point four, what is the effective vaccination rate for COVID nineteen?
I could do that calculation. It'll be in the, it'll be like in the forty to fifty percent range. It'll be somewhere in there.
Okay.
It's like one minus the R, R naught, it's, uh, what is it? It's, I think it's R naught minus one over R naught or something. I can't remember the formula. It's a very simple formula, but I, I, you can look it up.
So Rafi Lefkowitz, who's in Israel right now, says it's about, he thinks it's about sixty percent.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay. David.
Either vaccinated or naturally immune. And actually, it's a bit more subtle than that because if you vaccinate, this is some papers that we published a long time ago. If you vaccinate the popular people, you can get away with vaccinating fewer. And this is one of the reasons why the attack rate is often lower. Because what happens is popular, it's not a random draw, forty percent of the people get the disease. It's the forty percent of the people who are socially mixing more. So the popular people are more likely to get it and they're more likely to acquire immunity, which means they stop the flow of the pathogen through the social network. If you're interested in this topic, I had a TED Talk called Using Social Networks to Predict Epidemics, which is the, one of the scientific bases for the Hunala app that you can learn more about.
Okay, David goes on to ask this question. If kappa high for SARS two, if the cap is high for SARS two, do you have a sense for which individuals have a higher RE? David, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, and what human factors are more likely to be super spreaders?
Yeah, this is a very hot topic of research. I think it's very important that we not reason backwards. In other words, if there's a distribution of a number of, number of alters infected per ego, just by chance alone, someone has to be a super spreader. In other words, there may be no explanation. It's just random variation. Or there may be an explanation at the individual level. For example, maybe I have a more irritable throat. So I cough with greater velocity and so I infect a lot of people when I'm infected, but you, Patrick, do not. Or maybe I shed more virus for some other reason. So maybe different age or, or other kinds of factors may affect or clinical factors, you know, find immunocompromised, for example, may affect why some people spread more to others. And, and there's a lot of work that's being done right now to look at that, but I think most of the variants will be chance. And also a lot of super spreading events like the meatpacking factories. And if you're interested in that, I did a long thread on Twitter about meatpacking. I saw someone asked about it. I can talk if you want it. He tell you all you want to know about meatpacking. Or you can read about it on Twitter, but a lot of the super spreading events take place in, in densely packed turbulent air conditions. So at conferences where there are a lot of people packed into a room or meatpacking plants where the temperature is cold, there's a lot of wind, aerosolization because of use of equipment and, and cold and dense, dense workers. So, so these kinds of things are things to avoid. And this is why, incidentally, as much as possible, you should be having your meetings outside, you should be eating outside. These are basic things that you can do to reduce your risk.
Okay. Also from Israel, if in nineteen eighteen, there was a much smaller proportion of people over age sixty five, how much can we really compare fatality rates of COVID nineteen and Spanish flu?
Well, it depends on if you're just looking at overall deaths. I mean, and you could do age adjustment. Sure, of course you could do age adjustment and I, I haven't seen age adjusted case fatality rates compared. In nineteen eighteen, the population in general was younger than we are now. So I actually think if you did that adjustment, you would find that the nineteen eighteen flu was even deadlier than we thought. Or, you know, if you standardize it to a contemporary population. So I don't know if that will improve the comparison. I, I think this pathogen is bad, the one that we have. I don't think it's as deadly. There's another subtle point. You guys remember that famous study that Danny Kahneman did? It was Don Redelmeier, who was one of my favorite scholars in general medicine and, and, and Dvorsky, actually, it wasn't Kahneman. On the colonoscopy, where like if you, you give someone a painful colonoscopy for an hour and then you give them a little shot of fentanyl at the end, they think, oh, the whole thing was great. I didn't suffer at all. Or you give them a half hour colonoscopy and no shot of fentanyl and they think it was the worst pain they've had and it was a miserable experience. And I think that paper in Nijam was called The Importance of Good Endings. And it was, what it was about was that adding a little extra that's good seems to falsely make you think that everything else is hunky dory. And, and even though the total pain was more, so this is a subtle point I'm about to make. So some people are arguing that actually SARS two is just as deadly as SARS one, conditional on giving you pneumonia. But because we have so many other things that SARS also does to us, like giving us mild disease, like, you know, giving us kidney problems and cardiac problems, all this other stuff it does, we're stupidly concluding that it's less serious the threat. It's not a less serious threat, this person argues. This was a paper in Nature like a week or two ago. It basically says what SARS two has done is broaden the spectrum of people that it afflicts. So we are now, it's basically infecting more people. And those that it gives pneumonia to, it still kills them just as much as SARS one. So my question to you would be, what would you rather have? SARS one, which infects fewer people and kills many, or SARS two, which infects more people and kills as many as SARS, as SARS one did? Basically, that's the point.
Two questions here. I'm going to skip around a little bit. Two questions here about the Hunala app. One is, does it take into account occupational risk?
No, we're not currently asking occupation, but we do ask if you use public transportation or have been in a crowd. So we, we don't, we, we're not asking people like, are you a healthcare worker, for example? But we hope to improve the app as time goes by. We're trying to get the right balance of non intrusive questions and ease that will let people use it. We are developing a dashboard for the app. And it is my hope that we could get leaders at Yale, New Haven to adopt the dashboard so they can monitor conditions in New Haven. This is a, it would be like the police trying to use ways to see where are their traffic jams. People are reporting, oh, there's an accident here. But the, the, the transportation department in a state could say, where are the dangerous parts of our highways? Let's look at a month of reports on, you know, where people, you know, have been crowdsourcing where traffic jams are. It's that kind of anonymized aggregate data that I hope our app will be able ultimately to yield.
And Syria Hassan asks if the app will be amenable to being adopted for use in other countries.
Right now, it's only available in the United States because of the G D P R regulations. If the app, if we can get it to work in the United States and get goodly adoption, then we will try to broaden it to make it worldwide. We think this app will be very useful as we emerge from lockdowns and with a second wave. And I need to, and I had to remind you something else. The app, you don't have to use it every day. It sends you a reminder on your iPhone, doesn't text you, just sends you a reminder. And it works better if you tell us who your contacts are. We don't, we don't, we don't violate your privacy. We don't, we don't inform your contacts that you had COVID, nor do we inform you that your contacts have a fever. We just use the contact information to uniquely identify people and map the network. And they get a text message that says someone you know is using the Yale app Hunala, you may want to sign up. If you do sign up for the app and you want to encourage others in your network to use it, that would be phenomenal. You can also text them on your own and say, hey, this is pretty cool. Why don't you use it?
One last question because we're just about out of time. And this is a very practical one from a group of people who have a lot of kids. What do you think's going to happen or what's your advice around restarting school and college, both pre-college and college?
There's a huge debate in my family. My wife is, is an early childhood teacher. She wrote a book called The Importance of Being Little, which is a magnificent book. It was a New York Times bestseller. It's a great book for young kids. My brother is one of the country's leading pediatricians. He's very pro on reopening schools and he was recently asked to be on Laura Ingraham, which he really. And he was recently asked to be on Laura Ingraham, which he really debated whether to do. And then finally he said, well, even, even her viewers' kids deserve, you know, to hear about what to do, you know? Anyway, it's a serious problem. I think school closure, we disagree even in my family. I think the weight of the evidence suggests that school closure is a very effective means of controlling an epidemic. However, we have to look at the costs. And it's a bit unfair to ask our children yet again to take it on the chin for their elders. And the idea that we would reopen stadiums and bars before we reopen schools is absurd, right? Like if we're going to open bars and gyms, we got to figure out how to open schools before we do that, right? Or if you had to pick, you'd open the schools and not the bars, for example. First point. Second point, unfortunately, it is the case that we run a risk when we do that. Uh, I think it's going to vary by age. It's not a one size fits all. And at the collegiate level, honestly, uh, Yale is going to try to reopen in the fall. I think we might squeak by, as you probably know, they're trying to compress the semester to end before Thanksgiving. We might, we might squeak by. I don't know.
Nicholas, I can't thank you enough for your time. I know you have another, uh, event to head off to. Uh, thank you all. Thank you so much. We really, really appreciate it and, uh,
Thank you for having me. Thank you for, I know I'm on the other side of campus, but I'm really honored to be a part of the section and grateful for it. So thank you for welcoming me.
And we are honored to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.